Official?
Uh.
Still spinning up?
Well, I clicked the button. You can begin, sir.
Alright, everyone, we'll go ahead and call the March fourteenth, twenty twenty two, uh, work session, workshop to order, or to discuss. We want to step right into our regular meeting. Commissioners, we were sent out the information last, or Monday before last. I'll have to go over. Uh, approval of the agenda. Everyone, okay with what we got? Add to the consent agenda. Review the previous meeting minutes, which is February fifteenth. The workshop and, and the regular scheduled meeting. Is there any additions or deletions or corrections that need to be updated on the meetings? Here now, I want to add them to the consent agenda. No more appointments or proclamations. We'll step into approvals response quick. We have review of bids for patrol cars for the police department, commissioner, cars.
In the, on the computer, it should be a readout of, of the three bids that we got from, of course, Ford and Chevrolet and Dodge. Out of all the companies that we asked for bid, the Dodges are not going to be available for quite some time yet, but, uh, but it's my understanding we're going to, if the commission approves, we're going to go ahead and get, uh, the four explorers that we've been driving. Three, yeah, she said that. We're going, four explorers, the three point O EcoBoost. They've got three extra, so we won't ask for those. They're going to be, uh, coming with a five years, hundred thousand mile warranty. In the beginning, we talked about two patrol cars, but we had one give down on us. And the repair cost of that, the last time this happened, one of the cars was a little over seven thousand dollars for the transmission long repaired. And truthfully, I don't see the point in spending seven thousand dollars on a car with a hundred thousand dollars on it, because it could come off the road pretty quick anyway. So instead of two, we've asked, we'll ask for three. These cars cost a total of thirty-seven thousand, seventy-five dollars and forty cents is the vehicle price. The price for the lighting equipment to go on will be twelve thousand, five hundred dollars each. The graphics, the signage on the side is rounded up, it says seven ninety something another, but rounded up to about eight hundred dollars for the signage. Uh, there's miscellaneous equipment, there's still stuff on that budget, but we did put a price on that. We have looked at putting the, the water cannon, fire extinguishers, like the fire trucks don't have. We've looked at one of those and, uh, and I think I got one downstairs that Ansel brought us to look at. But we've tried to fit those in somewhere where we can fit them into the patrol cart, and they're just too big. So we're going, so we're going to scratch that figure. The, uh, we went ahead and changed it. The fire extinguishers, this will be a little bit different, what you got on your computers. The fire extinguishers that we're going to buy are going to be sixty dollars a piece. And those are regular fire extinguishers. Then you've got the jump box, the hundred and seventy dollars, that's the, uh, uh, you know, boost up box where we can, you know, help services, get your cars cranked, what have you. A wide angle camera head, which I think the mayor's going to get the price on that.
Yeah, uh, we're still waiting on Stella and Dylan. We're still waiting on the price for the, of the front camera head for the officers. It's a new version, it gives them a wider anger, wider angle when they're out checking licensing and traffic stops, and also a third camera where the officer can actually move it where he wants it to be. All of our cars, except for one, had the elder cameras. And one of the things about the cameras, we're going to be reusing the existing hard drive, the cameras, the inside cameras, and their body cameras. And it will be ordered, a wiring kit. So I asked for three wiring kits and the cameras for the three, and then the next vehicles. And we still haven't got that yet, so, uh, we can send that out once that comes in to add to the total price of the vehicles. I apologize, I spoke with him first of last week.
But that, that's going to be a little small, small additional addition. Anyway, the, uh, extended warranty, the five year, hundred thousand mile, yeah, I think that's a, it's going to cost us twenty-four ninety-five a car, a twenty-four ninety-five dollars a car to have the extended warranty. But there again, we're looking at a seven thousand dollar transmission right now. If we, if we had the warranty, we'd be covered. So, uh, I won't include in the price of the purchase, the twenty-four ninety-five for the extended warranties, that's five year, hundred thousand mile. There's a list on your computer, if you get it pulled up, that shows you what all the lighting kit costs, and it's got, it's got it broken down for you. But anyway, everything's there, so I'd like to tell someone to make a motion to wait and order these three cars.
Well, if everybody's okay with it.
Get their message.
And what's the total amount?
The total complete, if you want to write this down, is fifty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents per car. You multiply that times three. It's a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty cents. The only thing we're missing is the camera, uh, head to be updated on, the watch guard and the wiring. When we tear the old cars down, we're going to try to do that in-house. We'll take everything off and just leave the wiring. There's so much wire, there's, there's no way to pull it out.
So what will we do in the long term?
We'll surplus those out. But on the, what's the GovDile?
Yeah, we do our GovDile account. We'll probably take the light bars and stuff off of them, because the current cars, we've had a few issues with the light bars. The last time we waited on parts, you know how long it was, weeks?
It was over two months.
Yeah, so we have a few parts left if another light bar went out. We're reusing the radios, computer stand, the computer mount. That's in the drawer cabinet in the rear. It's the only thing that will fit with the new cars, from the old cars.
We're saving as much as we possibly can to put back into the units.
Everything we're taking out of the old cars is sent out to us through email.
And there's a breakdown of all the bids in your, in your computer there?
Yeah, they should be the very front page there of what, uh, Dylan was saying there.
Alright, so we had discussed two, but since we had one give down, it puts us one more short. And to be honest with you, I think the, the availability of cars is getting less and less. Uh, the Dodge is not even going to build cars to next year. So there's a lot of, you know, a lot of ifs, even if we went back, four or five, that we could even get the other two or three right now. Probably not. If we buy three now, we'll just have to buy, you know, maybe two next time, next year. We've been through a plan to do it anyway, just in reverse, we're going to buy two, then three, then we need to buy three, then two. We have a, y'all want to see the design we're going to put on the car?
I think it was in their packet.
It might be in the packet.
It is in the packet.
It's tracking, it is in the packet, okay.
Yes, the, I think it's next to the last, you know.
The design will be a little bit different, what we've had. And I think it's time for a change, plus the design we've gotten now will be, it'll show up a lot better from the people's windows when you drive by their houses. And I want us to be as visible as possible. Yeah, there is a picture there. It's not in color, but it's pretty in color. It's black and blue, flat.
And we got these out last week for you to review. Had time to talk to Mike or Steve about this. What was the date they gave us, possibly?
Uh, he's already got a handful of this body stock order, so it should be less than thirty weeks.
Thirty weeks?
Less than thirty.
So we got time to recoup our money from sploshes. Right now, if we were to pay everything right now, that we've already promised for the parts and fire department and this, we're a little bit under, but we still have two months that is owed to us right now, so. I've got a detailed spreadsheet I'm working on that I get to you soon, so we can watch where we're spending. I broke it down by every department. And while we're spending out of every department, then we'll have a running total of, how much is in each, how much is total, and once we subtract it out, so we'll keep a running total. I'm still getting my math to work from all the sheets, so. Do I have to add it to the consent agenda, or not?
Yeah.
Everybody good? Okay. Alrighty. Ordinance for stormwater and local issue authority, right behind, it also was emailed, and also right behind Mike's paper, uh, the police department's bids. We have a soil erosion, sedimentation and pollution control ordinance. We done this several years ago, uh, but we have yet to find the ordinance of it to turn into EPD. What this allows is for the city of Trent inspections to be, uh, watching when people are breaking ground, if they're disturbing more than an acre, to be able to issue them, you know, their warning, making sure that the contractor has a, uh, a card from, from Georgia Stormwater Soil Sedimentation. It also allows new businesses to issue, or new constructions to issue the, uh, applications into the city of Trent. And then we directly take them to EPD in Carterville. This helps us, it's Tracy with EPD that come up, thought we had this, I believe we did at one time, but we cannot find a written ordinance over, and we would like to, what you see behind the same ordinance. I've talked to the attorney, he has done this for several of the cities that he does this with. And if we're okay to move with this, uh, we would, uh, he would have it drafted up for the next meeting. Currently, Ansel and Jerry are certified as red card level one A inspectors and controllers. This just keeps people from digging areas and then polluting the acre or polluting the streams and make sure they're doing best practices and things of that statute. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Alrighty, the last ordinance, uh, as we've been going through our work sessions, a couple of retailers for our malt beverage and wines said, ask that maybe we could go ahead and actually get the Sunday sales ordinance passed, so we talked about this last month, I talked to Ron, actually Ryan and Ray, uh, got this out. So what we'll be doing tonight, if we add this to the consent agenda, this would go into effect immediately after the vote tonight. Uh, I guess we could alert the stores as well, that there will be Sunday sales, malt beverage and wine package, and then Sunday sales of distilled spirits or alcohol beverage for a purpose of consumption or by drink. The dates of this for the malt beverage would be from, uh, the retail outlets, I think it's on the second page, or under item one, the business outlets or retail outlets, it would be from the time between twelve-thirty PM to eleven-thirty PM on Sundays. The malt, that's for the, uh, malt beverage and wine, uh, outlets. And the malt beverage and wine is the same way, it will be from twelve-thirty PM to twelve midnight, there's just a little difference in thirty minutes there, it looks like. Yeah, those times are displaced on the, uh, page two and three. And right above it, it talks about which sections of the articles of the current, Chapter Six, Article Four of our current alcohol ordinance. It's just what they amended to the muni codes at the end of the year to be available. I have a question, a discussion, this is one of the votes that was done, one of the votes that was done during the November election, as we put this into effect.
I think we need to call him back out.
Yeah.
If that allows.
Yeah. Everybody good? Alright. Next thing I got laying here on your desk, I'm sorry, I just got this quote with our name on it today. This is the assembly, I talked to some of y'all individually about the meeting software. Takes a lot of time to work on these books. The Day County School Board, the Day County Commission moved it, Day County, the school board's been open for years. The commission moved to it not long ago. It's also easier for the public, the public will be able to see all of this documentation by just going to our website, clicking on the meetings, and pull it up and see the financials, the minutes, read it all the time and be available, and it's also queued for us, and we are working with less people right now, and it takes a lot of time to get this paperwork together. Once anything is input into the document, it will email you, the commissioners, that flag statements were put in, or Terry's update was put in on his, on his commissioner, or anything that's added into the meeting software, uh, it would be added in, and you would, all commissioners would get an email, you'd be able to see it, and when we're ready to publish it out, once the agenda's been set, we publish it out, and the QR code will be available, and or the link from our website to go straight to assembly. The price of it's twenty-seven fifty a year, it's a yearly subscription. It was really designed for school boards, but a lot of cities and counties are using this because the meeting is so easy. It records who makes the minutes, the minutes are wrote in it as well. You know, once, just say one of the commissioners made a motion, April could sit right here and say that Commissioner Norris made a motion, and Commissioner House seconded it, and then when we do a roll call, all in favor, we'd say yes, yes, yes. Finally writing the minutes as we go down the agenda before we're in the regular meeting. And it also gives you the option, if you're looking at it as a commissioner, if you have a note about something, you can write a note about any of the bids or ordinances, remind yourself, or you could give your detailed report, anything you want to add extra. So I encourage you to go to Day County's website, daycounty.gov, when it says agenda and minutes. If you hit that, and you look at the previous workshop we just had and the previous meeting, you can see all the details when you go. Agenda's laid out just like this, and so when you start looking at that ordinance for stormwater, if you look at that, it would open that whole ordinance up for the public to see. Really user friendly for the public, it lets everything be visible and available, all the financials will be available at all times, and if we had time or had any time, it'd be great to go back and put prior stuff in, but.
So, so it's twenty-seven fifty a year?
It's a yearly subscription, and their year runs, uh, July to June, so we would be partially billed per month, which is two hundred and twenty-nine dollars a month.
So we're only looking at the meetings part, not the rest of it?
Yeah, not the rest of it, yeah. Just the meeting section. But they'll work with our logo, they have each one of your names. If, if a commissioner, if somebody wanted to directly email you or talk to you, they could, they have your information, which we do currently now off the page. And we'd be using our laptops every time, it'd be easier and less paper. We'd have the one copy that the clerk would be able to just put in, and once stuff is turned in to each of you, you'd have the option to either put your own monthly statement in, and then let every commissioner see it. It's a really deep, every month when I do my nine-one-one and EMA reports, I just go and log into it, attach it to the commissioner's, uh, open session, they have everything right there, and he tells them directly, it's really neat.
But as you're saying, it would have our policies and stuff? Would it have our policy? And then, now as far as communications?
None of that, stuff below it is a part of it.
Okay, well, when you said something about we could put notes in there, whatever, make it look down.
That'd be your personal notes on the topic of the agenda.
Okay, so what, communications, okay, so, okay.
Yeah. Like you can put a post-it note, like stick in a post-it note on there, if you've seen something you wanted to ask, or remember, hey, I need to ask Terry about this project he's wanting to bring up, he, he'd just write you some notes on there and call him and say, oh, hey, what about this and this? It's kind of like that in the post-it note, that you and your commissioners will have a different login, and what the public would see is just your notes and stuff that you would put on there.
And what do they charge us to set it up to begin with?
That's everything right there.
Twenty-seven fifty?
Yeah, we should be done in almost a year and a half, I'll set through, help them set it up for the IT side of it myself again. It's really pretty simple, and it's all cloud-based software. And the school board's been using it for five-plus years, you're on. I'm laying it be the top section of it. I guess it's something we have to probably do out of the general fund each year, because it'd be a recurring monthly cost or yearly cost. And it's just for discussion tonight, I talked to y'all individually about it, but I would like for y'all to spend some time and go to the county's website, the Day County School System's website, and see how it's laid out. Clip down through the agenda and look at the topics that's underneath there, you can see the view.
Do you look at it, April? I would get it somewhere, and I should too.
And like, like if the folks that come in here, they could have, we'd have the agenda laid out, they could just scan the QR code and it'd go right to the meeting. For all our technical folks. And then we still have the regular detail, they just have the breakdown of all the, everything you have in this book will be in that before the, and the review back at any time. And then once the minutes are down, and then we, like these past minutes we just approved, she would attach them back to the previous meeting minutes, because once you approve them now, they're signed off on by both of us, and that's the legal minutes of the prior meeting. I just wanted to bring it up to you and show you, because I talked to y'all individually about it when we were talking about the computers. And, uh, take a few minutes and do some homework, and look at the, look at the Board of Education. If you go to this website, they also, eboardsolutions.com, they got other several cities and demos, you can look at the sections of it, it's really neat. Alright, that's everything in the work sessions, so we're going to go ahead and step right into the regular meeting. I understand, let's go. We'll step in, pray the word of prayer, and then we'll be able to pledge allegiance to the Lord. Let's all pray. Here in Paul, we thank you for this day, and thank you for this commission, and our employees, and our citizens, and our visiting crowd here tonight, and what they do. Please be with us as we go along tonight and conduct business of this city, and be with us as we continue on in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with eternal justice and glory.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis? Regular scheduled meeting of the city of Trent, which takes place the second Monday, very private, local. Notice this meeting was given to our local media and our Facebook and website as well. At this time, we'll go for a roll call, Commissioner Powell?
Here.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Norris?
Here.
Commissioner House, I'm sorry, this is, I got the wrong name on there, apologies. Alright, we'll go into the police commissioners and police, Commissioner Norris?
The report for February is going to be, the department issued twenty-six speeding citations, did nine driver's license violations citations, eleven vehicle registrations violations, one settled alcohol to a minor, nine insurance violations, two fairytale violations at railroad crossings, two traffic light violations, seven hands-free violations, one obstructive view violation, one theft by shoplifting, eight seatbelt violations, one disorderly conduct, four DUIs, two open containers, one stop sign violation, one improper stopping on railroad, or roadway, and one fairytale intersection, and one tent violation. The collected fines for February were thirteen thousand, nine hundred and two dollars, with a total of fines collected up to date at twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, sir. Paul, it's directed, Commissioner Powell?
Okay, the community center was ready for eighty hours. Animal control had ten work orders or complaints. And I'm going to bring this up, we're going to need some help. We're going to add it in, in our website and in the paper, but we need two people at the pool, and I'll need one, uh, part-time helper at the park doing regular maintenance work. So if you know anybody that might be interested in a job, we're going to have two or three open down there.
So lifeguard stealers?
One, one lifeguard, or two, or, and someone to, uh,
concession.
Take the money and run the concession. Then the other person will be helping with the grass, the bathrooms, and any other maintenance that goes on at the park. So if you see anybody needing a part-time job, we've got several of them. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Fire and drillers, Chris, alright.
Okay, we'll start with the sewer report. Eighteen underground locates, six emergency locates, nine sewer calls, and two sewer line inspections. And then, the building anxiety, we had, uh, six remodels, one site review, and one property review. And then, there was, uh, four electrical HVAC plumbing inspections completed. And the fire department, we had ten fire-related calls, four accidents, seven medical, sixteen standby, and they were dispatched and canceled and wrapped to sixty-eight, for a total of a hundred dollars. And I would like to say thank you for all the firemen, volunteers, employees, and all the people, people in the West River trade, and for the jobs you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Wood, it's Curtis.
Regularly, other than our normal maintenance and stuff, uh, we have got our, we've been working on all of our equipment, getting it ready for spring, and, um, to follow up with Terry, we will need a part-time person or two, so. I think what works out great is that we, we've had a couple of, uh, seniors in high school that were, some of the work problems, they really worked out well. Thank you for a job.
Where I get the face or notice out of the paper and the website, first, kind of. Thank you. Mayor's report, and we've, and we've been working a little less since Cindy retired, we will be looking at some of the applications that come in tonight and examine your session personnel. It's been busy in here, and I appreciate, uh, everyone, from Steve to Dylan to Ansel and Jerry for helping when times are busy up here, and April by herself, so I appreciate the hard work. One of the things that we weren't able to do today, and Miss Cindy did come back and help us a little bit, you know, stressed this before in the past, is sometimes reconciliating the bank statement within a few days, and, you know, only one here, and phones ringing if people come in, things seem to take a lot longer to get done, so we had, we're just hunting down a hundred and forty dollars and,
Hundred and forty-eight.
Hundred and forty-eight dollars to reconcile the general fund, and we're still looking for it, so that's why I'm looking into the financials yet, so. I've done this, and I've thought about this in the past, and it's, it's tough to move it that quick, depending on what things, is that we might need to back up on my, in the rear to give us plenty of time to check statements and get things balanced, uh, so it might be something we may look at to balance the books to you and to the public, a month behind, to get plenty of time to do it. This may be a recurring thing, is, you know, we get somebody picked and trained, it's a lot on one person right now, and, so, I think things are fine, once we find that, we're going to work on it some, together, man, shut the doors, cut the lights off, go back there and make sure they're in balance, so. Just appreciate the understanding in that, so. We'll start through the financials, uh, tab two. Our current savings, uh, account is a hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixteen cents reconciliation follows. Our fund, uh, still the same, is four hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. Little report on that, made of Commissioner House and pepper up the date, she's been out a little sick, but we did meet with our engineer, and we did sign, sign that final contract, we've done a few steps coming to that, so, in the months, that's completions of, of, uh, contracts, contracts to be, uh, designed, and then a piece of information to be sent out to get bids on this stuff, so we'll be bringing that stuff to you and explaining it more and more, so that's happening as we go. Uh, reconciliation follows behind that. Sewer fund, current, uh, balance is a hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and one cent, reconciliation follows. Uh, again, uh, the next thing will be our year-to-date, we didn't get the final monthly on the sewer. Sewer fund, year-to-date for two mon, or three months. Sewer fund, year-to-date for two months, or three months, January through March is ninety-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. That's the charge for services. And our total expenses for the- total expenses for the year is eighty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and nine cents. Hotel motel fund currently is a hundred thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirteen cents for reconciliation follows. Police departments, special seizure funds, two thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-three cents for reconciliation follows. Fire department, explorer fund, one thousand forty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents and reconciliation follows. Twenty-fifteen splash projects, bank statement's eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and three cents for reconciliation follows. And our current twenty-twenty-one splashed is two hundred and eight thousand four hundred and one dollars and twenty-eight cents. I think my report and the financials as completed minus the general fund, we'll have to double up that on next month. So we'll need a motion for the financials. Motion by Commissioner Wood.
I'll say it.
So if I can reach your files or any other discussion, if not in all favor, the financial is good. Say aye or aye aye vote, motion carries. All right, we'll go into appearances. Ms. Eloise Gass, Tree City, USA.
Well, Tree City's not done much this past month. It's raining a lot, and then here, here the other day, it snowed, so we're maybe get started about the middle of this month, maybe.
Been too cold. Yeah, we're going to put that ass on freeze, but- All right, thank you, Ms. Eloise. The county library.
Hey, I want to apologize for arriving late. I had my time mixed up, I thought it was seven. And then my calendar popped up and said six, and I had to double check the time, so my apologies for arriving late. Things are ticking along great at the library. Our biggest thing since I've come in is we are doing a deep weed of our collection, which means we go through and we do a calculated inventory of what has circulated and what has not circulated over the past five years, the past three years, the past two years, because we are considered a new book library as opposed to an archival library. So our goal is to bring new books in and increase what the availability of new titles, new authors, new books to our collection. So we've been working really hard on that. We have a great partnership with one of our distributors where they do a recycling program, where we are able to give all of our, the books that we're weeding back to them, and they either give us credit back that we can use on books, or they recycle all of our books sustainably. So that's what we've been working on. We've also introduced new children's programming, new teen programming, new adult programming, which we're all very excited about. Our Ready to Read program has just continued to grow. I think we had a record twenty-three children this past Thursday. It's really a great program, getting all of, all of our preschoolers ready for kindergarten with storytime, craft time, etc. We are finishing up our family outreach program, which is called Primetime. That winds up, it was a six-week program, that winds up this Tuesday. It'll be our final night, and we have a state representative coming, from the Georgia Public Library, is coming to observe our final night of that program, so we're excited to be able to show him what we were able to do. The community supported us. We had a lot of community support to provide meals, community support provided, incentives for our drawings. Each week, we give away a gift, a gift bag, and we have a final drawing, which is gift cards to the gas station, both grocery stores, Dollar General. Everybody's very, really excited about, it's a hundred dollars, the grand prize is a hundred dollar drawing, so everybody's really excited about that. And we are, we just started, our youth education coordinator, Spencer, started about, about a month and a half ago, and he's, he's just incredible. He just talked with the Druids Lair, and we're going to be working on a partnership with Druids Lair on a Pokemon club, which we're really excited about. It draws in all the way from upper elementary to young adult doing gaming. So we're going to be working on a collaboration with Druids Lair. We've also been working with the schools. We were at the state county middle school this past Monday, working with the seventh grade ELA classes, where we are trying to get students to enroll online for a digital library card so they can have access to Libby. Libby is the audiobook device that's free and you have access to ebooks, audiobooks, and magazines. And we, the library purchased secretist usage of one of the titles. The seventh graders are reading The Hobbit, and they just produced a new audiobook of The Hobbit in 2020, so we purchased that. So every student that's in the seventh grade that is reading The Hobbit as their class novel has the opportunity to, for free, download the audiobook and be able to listen to that book while they're reading it in class, which is a huge boon for literacy, because audio comprehension usually is a little bit more advanced than visual comprehension, so especially with a, I call something like The Hobbit a really dense read, it's, that's not easy reading, especially for seventh graders, they're really, they're really challenging them. So it was a great meeting, and we really enjoyed working with the schools. We have a couple of projects we're working on with them. One of our big things is trying to get the Play Card Initiative going, which is a collaboration between Georgia Public Library System and Georgia Public Schools, where when they enroll in school, they will automatically get a library card unless they opt out, which would just break down one more barrier to us being able to get them access to E-Read Kids, which is a collection of over thirty thousand titles of ebooks that they would be able to read. The other big initiative we have, we also now check out hotspots and Chromebooks from the library. So just like you can check out a book, you can check out a hotspot if you have, if you don't have internet, and you can check out a Chromebook, and you have that for two weeks, and you can renew it once. So we're really excited about being able to offer that to the community.
Good, hopefully that grant that local phone company get, to get all that internet throughout the county will help alleviate some of that, that's good.
Exactly.
I was leaving out of the office, commission office today from working, somebody here at lunch, and they were looking for the library. I said, it's that beautiful green building right over there. And they were walking, they were parked out in Veterans Park, so they walked right over to husband and wife visiting, and they come in the commission office looking for something. I said, we think the library is right there.
Well, I'm continually amazed at how much this community utilizes the library for a variety of reasons, not just coming to check out our book collection, but we have, I mean, every single day, we have community members using our computer room to print out job applications. I've helped folks print out tax forms. I've helped folks work on their resumes. We had somebody do a job interview, they needed to do a, like a Google Meet or a Zoom interview in one of our study rooms. Our fax machine is incredible. I mean, people have literally told me that we saved their life from printing, you know, having to do, dealing with death certificates and the spouse passing away, insurance claims. It's every single day we have stories like that, where the community is coming to the library, and we feel like we're usually, I mean, almost a hundred percent of the time, we can help you out, we can find a way to help you out, so.
That's good, and we appreciate the work. It's good to be able to point somebody that is in the right place today.
I appreciate that. Thank you for having me.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Lines for day, Ms. Janet Dixon.
Well, Mayor Case, we would like first to thank you. Last two weeks ago or so, we did our lunch and learn. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to be there, and so I don't know how many of you all were able to attend, but I do know that whether you were there or not, you were well represented by your mayor. Alex did a very good job, they said, in discussing with the group of people who chose to attend, projects, things that you all are doing. And it, as she said about the library, it's just amazing how much goes on that you all as a small group of five people do. And Alex talked about those things, he really kept the group engaged with what he was trying to share, so I was really asked, and I'm certain that you understood, Alex, how important it was that you were there.
It's a team effort, it's all part of it.
Yeah, but you represented them well. You did a very good job for them, so we appreciate it. The other thing is I sat here listening to you all discussing the part-time workers, or maybe just summer workers or people that you know. There are a number of people in the world who are in their vocation because of what they started out as a part-time job. And you think about it, a lot of people who work here in the city may have at one time done this as a part-time employment, or watched somebody, or their neighbor was working here with the city. The Lines for Day, which you all are a part of, you are sponsoring with the school system what's called Career Day. I think I shared with you all the last time I spoke, in a sense, the very depressing fact, maybe, that over a hundred of our students who graduate this graduating class will not apply even to college. Okay, let's remove the depression part of that, which it may not really be, but let's ask, what are they going to do? Because none of them want to grow up in poverty, and they want to get, most of them, a good job that they enjoy and they can make a fair living at. So what we have decided to do with the school system, Josh Engel, we will be sponsoring Career Day. We are asking any business who employs career people. Now, you constantly, Alex, refer to Ansel, okay? That's a career position for them, right? So somebody took your jobs, and where did they come from? How did they get in here? You may want to consider participating in the job fair that we're having. It's a career day for the high school students. Only high school students can attend. It will be from nine until eleven, and there'll be a lunch, and then there's going to be some more things in the afternoon. But businesses will be there, and they will be demonstrating what their employers do on-site, the employees, to maybe spark some interest of these hundred-and-something students that are going to settle somewhere. So if you are interested, please, it's free. It's a free thing you can do. The students will be captive to you and the business in town. We're really trying to get the businesses engaged, so if you know someone who owns a business, or one afternoon, if you just kind of feel like you've got time on your hands, head back here on, in the park, and just go in and ask people, would you consider showing up? Show the kids here what you do here. I've said this before, but this was one of the most eye-opening things I've ever seen that happens in this little town of Trenton, is Integer. If you've never seen what we do in Trenton at Integer, you need to walk in and ask them to show you, because it is fantastic what goes on there. And I'm not sure that the high school kids coming out of high school have any idea the vocation they could make themselves there, or the career jobs. People say, well, I don't want to start at the bottom. Well, I did learn something from Jessie Holland, who owns the Canyon Grill. Everyone who works there starts washing dishes. And she's got employees who have been there since the day it opened. People start in the kitchen, washing dishes, and learning to be a community person at the Canyon Grill. So, you know, we've got to find some way to help our hundred-and-something kids that will be leaving that high school to do something productive that will enable them to have a workable, livable income. So if you will help us out, if you see people, talk to them. Y'all can come together and just have one person show up and say, we have jobs, look what all we have that people do, and we would appreciate that. That will really help us, it will help these hundred students, and that's all I really have to share for you tonight. Thank you, Alex.
Well, one of the things that our explorer program, we talked about for fire and EMS, that's something we hope that could take them to go somewhere. But one of our seniors this year, he come by the other day after a call we got finished with, he said, I'm not, I'm not skipping school, because he swung by. He was going for his orientation at Trent Pressing, he's eighteen years old, and he gets out on his work release, and he'd already worked two days or two shifts. He goes from three to eleven, and he come in, and a lot of the other vocational we have helped with in the past, before COVID, we'd have the health groups come in and sit at nine-one-one and see how things work, and I know they go to the nursing home and different areas, but they do have a lot of things and traits that they're giving folks out, helping with. It's good that-
This is April fifth.
Yeah, Trent Pressing is helping with hiring high school students to start and things, but he was probably one of those one hundred that won't go to college, and he's really enjoying it. Seems real fired up about it, so we're excited for him.
Now, I think, Alex, we, in a very, very respectful way, we can say, college is not a place that everyone would go up to go, not at all. You know, you, you try to hire a plumber, okay, to come to your house and find a water leak from Creek Road all the way to my house. I wouldn't want to share with you how much that plumber charged me to find a leak, okay? So there are jobs where people can have respectable living. We just have to get them to realize that.
I think with industry and schools are doing a good job, but then stuff like this for other things I haven't learned too, so it's a community input model.
Well, thank you all for any way you can help them.
Jennifer, I'll have you in here, if you've got any updates on the town Creek Road.
Not at this time, but maybe next month.
I know we got the extension on the handrails down.
That's good, that has been installed.
It's been, the weather's not been pleasant.
It has not, but those bulbs that I planted are coming up at Canada East forty-five.
Good, good, yeah. All right, any legal matters, commissioners that we need to discuss or any unfinished business? Are we adding citizens' participation in our interesting commission before we go into new business? Here now, we'll go over items to be considered on the consent agenda. Approval of the agenda, approval of the previous meeting minutes, approval of three patrol cars for a total cost of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty cents, except when we get the final quotes on the cameras and the wire for three things that we have in. Approval of the local ordinance for stormwater issuing authority, and also the ordinance to Sunday sales of malt beverage, malt beverage and wine, and then malt beverage and wine and distilled spirits consumption on Sunday of the time, due to, will just be interrated with the current timeframes. And that'd be all, that'd be under the voting for new business, that I missed, corrections and everything. If all good, we'll take a motion for the items as ready.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner House.
I'll say it.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Are there any other discussion on items? No, in favor, say aye. Motion carries and you're close. All righty, I do need to ask for executive session, I need to ask for executive session for attorney, attorney privileges, that I need to update the commission on the letter that we received. Also, personnel, we're going to be going over some of the applications, that's what's in this right here, and land matter that has been approached to me from the county, just for discussion. So make a motion for personnel, land, and-